Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, December 18, 2017. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask the City Administrator to adjourn the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to approve the agenda. The addition is just changing the date of our city council meeting in January to Tuesday, January 2nd, given that the first is a holiday. Your pleasure with the agenda and the addition.
I move Mr. Mayor to accept the agenda as amended.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the agenda or the motion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote yes. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the regular city council meeting for December 4, 2017. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the motion of the minutes. End question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried and the minutes for December the 4th are approved. Thank you. And also on December the 4th, we have the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing and input and those minutes for your approval also. Motion by Counselor Pearson to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion again on the motion of the minutes. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried and minutes for December 4th, Truth and Taxation Hearing, approved. Thank you. Move to the payment of claims and approval of accounts payable. We have transfers to Fund Number 101, the General Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $18,285, to Fund Number 401, the Permanent Improvement Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,000, and to Fund Number 403, the Reserve for Capital Outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,428. Accounts payable claims, City of International Falls, $683,283. Airport Commission claims of $7,666.50 and Library Board claims of $22,439.17. Your pleasure with the transfers and the accounts payable.
Move on the transfers and accounts payable.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of the accounts payable.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the transfers and accounts payable are approved. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to bring something to the attention of the council at this time that's not on the agenda? If not, there'll be another opportunity at the close of the meeting. We'll move to all business and approve the resolution approving the City of International Falls Budget and Property Tax Levy collectible in 2018.
The Budget and Finance Committee would move that resolution.
We have a motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the resolution approving the Budget and Property Tax Levy collectible in 2018.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Are there none? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. There being four for and one against, the motion carries and the property tax levy and budget are approved. Thank you. We move to the consent agenda and we have 2018 license renewals. Coffee Landing Cafe, a restaurant license. Icebox Investments LLC doing business as Dairy Queen International Falls, a restaurant license. John's Ice and Fire Taxi and Van Service, a taxi license. Mike's Odd Jobs LLC, a snowplow license. The Yoga Bear Massage Therapy License. And the second item under the consent agenda is to approve the operating engineers, Local Number 49. Health and Welfare Fund Public Sector Employers Participation Agreement for non-bargaining employees. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
May I have a question first? I just have one question. Are all of the licenses renewals or are they, some of them new?
Do you have additional?
New licenses such as the Yoga Bear.
So I assume they're all renewals. I can't tell you otherwise.
Okay.
Again, your pleasure with the consent agenda.
I'll move on the consent agenda.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to new business and we have license renewals. C&amp;J Smith LLC doing business as the Viking Bar, a 3-2 off-sale license. Pool table license. Cigarette license. Off-sale liquor license. On-sale liquor license. Restaurant license. Sunday liquor license and a jukebox license. Erickson Oil Products Incorporated doing business as Freedom Value Center Number 62, a 3.2 off-sale license. Cigarette license. Gasoline pumps license and restaurant license. Various Enterprises LLC doing business as Barajas Mexican Grill, an on-sale liquor license. Sunday liquor license and restaurant license. Hanson's Outpost Incorporated, cigarette license. Off-sale liquor license. On-sale liquor license. Sunday liquor license. Restaurant license. Amusement games. Pool table and jukebox licenses. Leonard's of International Falls LLC doing business as Leonard's, an on-sale liquor license. Off-sale liquor license. Sunday liquor license. Restaurant license and jukebox license. Rose Garden, 3.2 on sale with a restaurant license and a restaurant license. The Fisherman, 3.2 off-sale license. Cigarette license. Gasoline pump license and restaurant license. Voyager Restaurant LLC, 3.2 on sale with restaurant license. Your pleasure with the approval of the 2018 license renewals.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve those license requests.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to approve the 2018 license renewals as we read.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the licenses. Chief, I would assume that you have reviewed all of the liquor licenses and there's no issues?
That's correct.
Thank you. Further discussion? Question on the motion to approve the licenses?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried and the 2018 license renewals are approved. Thank you. Item number two under new business is a resolution approving the State of Minnesota Agency Agreement for Federal Participation in Construction, acting through MINDOT Agency Agreement Number 1029958. Your pleasure with that resolution. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson to adopt the resolution approving the agency agreement with MINDOT. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Are there none? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the agency agreement with MINDOT is approved. Thank you. Item number three under new business is to approve the resolution approving application to conduct an off-site gambling for the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association to conduct a raffle at Cary Park Arena on March 18, 2018. Your pleasure with that resolution. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson to adopt the resolution. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Are there none? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the permit is approved for the raffle. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to consider the acquisition of a used 2007 75-foot ladder truck for the fire department. Chief Manassas.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just real quickly before Chief Manassas starts, I just wanted to remind the council that we distributed a revised fire apparatus purchase contract agreement to you, so I just wanted, yeah, so I just wanted to remind the council that the copy that was in the packet has a modification and the one that I passed out this evening is the updated version.
I'm up, Eric.
I'm good.
Okay.
Engineer, thank you, Mayor.
Chief, do you want to introduce your...
Yes. Tonight with me I have Engineer Jacob Harris and Engineer Jared Baldwin and Captain Eric So the truck we brought up to the Budget and Finance Committee at the last meeting, we had approval to go down and look at it. Myself and Engineer Baldwin and Engineer Harris made a trip down to Eagan and viewed the truck. It's a very nice truck. It's everything we thought it was going to be. We had the opportunity to drive the truck and operate it. Everything appears to be in excellent working order, very well taken care of, clean. Yeah, I mean, we didn't see anything bad with it. As part of the background information you guys received in the packet was the proposal to the Budget and Finance Committee along with some background information. We did receive, as Administrator Anderson talked about, we did receive the contract agreement from Fire Safety USA along with some financing options through the REV Group. So what we had discussed in the past is the truck is $420,000 without used equipment on it, or loose equipment on it, and $445,000 with the equipment on there. After viewing the truck, our original decision before the Budget and Finance Meeting was to buy the truck without the loose equipment on there. After viewing the truck, we think it's worth our money to purchase a truck loaded for the $445,000 price. One of the things we do have in place with Fire Safety USA is this is, we kind of got first dibs on it, I guess in lack of a better term, so it's ours to make the decision until noon tomorrow afternoon. Tomorrow it will go on the open market to somebody else if we don't make that decision. One of the things we do have, we talked about financing options, one of the things they've laid out for us is our down payment required if we purchase a truck is 20% down, which equals $89,000. One thing we can do is put as much money down on it as we want. If we use money out of the capital outlay, if we went up to whatever the price is, 200 or 225, whatever we wanted out of the capital outlay, we'd earn back 3% APR on that money for a year. This truck is not available until about a year from now. There's not a designated closeout date, but basically when they get the money from this truck, whether it's from us or somebody else, is when they start to build on their other truck. So when that replacement truck comes into service is when this truck will go out of service and be available. So if we did move on this truck, we're looking at about a December delivery date, December 2018.
A year from now?
Yep, 2018, correct.
In the meantime, they'll be using it?
Yes. So part of the contract does include a, I don't want to use the right word here, I don't think it's a performance clause. You do have the option to view the equipment up to 30 days before delivery to make sure there's not any problems with it. And then we have a, warranty is not correct here. Well, we can do that pre-by-inspection, but if we want to get out of the, if this truck happens to be in an accident or something to that nature, under the contract, it needs to be fixed to our specifications and approval, otherwise we can exit out of the contract if it does not meet our specs for that fix. I'm wondering if that accidentally got pulled out here. That wasn't in the original contract. We'll double-check and make sure our contract is good. There is one other item on here that needs to be amended, so one of the things Ken talked to me about just before the meeting is one other adaptation to the contract, so that is something we would make sure is in there. One of the things we did when looking at this truck, we also looked at the used market through different online sites is what we went through. One of the big advantages to this truck is it is in Minnesota. It's owned by a department in Minnesota that we know and we know their reputation. But in looking on the used market, we found a lot of different aerials. I don't know the exact number we looked at here, but it's a big stack, quite a few. And basically every one of these trucks we found on the used market is either too large to fit into our fire department or they're old, high miles. They just didn't fit the bill. This really is a very nice truck and would suit our needs very well. One of the biggest things we wanted to speak about to this is we're in a place where we need to get a different aerial truck. I don't feel our department needs to buy a brand-new million-dollar truck, but we need a different truck. And I think this is a good alternative for us. I think it suits our needs as a fire department, but it's also being responsible to the public and to the taxpayers. I think this is a very reasonable price for a very nice truck.
Our present ladder truck is of what size and what vintage?
Our present aerial truck is a 1982, so it's going to be 36 years old next year, and it's a 50-foot ladder. This new truck has a 75-foot ladder, which is going to be a lot more adaptable and a lot more user-friendly for us. One of the big benefits of this truck on a 75-foot ladder is the chassis it's on. This is on a single axle chassis, which makes it a little smaller and a little bit more maneuverable, which is going to be beneficial for us. So what I talked about on the other used trucks, most of them are about eight to 10 feet longer than the truck we're looking at, and they're a tandem axle. They're huge. They're just too big to get around. Virginia, Minnesota, has a, I believe there's a 105-foot Pierce tandem axle, and that truck is, I think it's pushing 50 feet long. They very recently wiped out the side of that truck getting out of their station. They can't make the corner where their fire station is situated. They can't come out of the door and make the corner to get onto the road. It's very, very tight, very close, and it's just a lot bigger apparatus than we need, I believe.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Do you examine the repair history on this truck?
We did.
Okay. And it's had very little repairs or...
Nothing outside of routine maintenance, meaning oil changes, annual pump tests and annual ladder certifications. It recently, within the last, I believe, month, they put new, brand-new tires on it as well, so nothing out of the ordinary as far as maintenance or repair.
My only heartburn on this is the fact that they get to use it for a year after we lock in. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor? Please.
One more thing that I could add is that I think in relation to what the chief was referencing previously is if you look at the new agreement, number five, it does talk about used apparatus condition inspection. It says that the buyer reserves the right to inspect the apparatus within 10 business days and notification that it's available for delivery and to ensure that the condition has not materially changed since pre-purchase inspection, which we did on December 8th. For us, if for whatever reason something materially significant happened over the course of the next year, we could address that at that time. It says that the contract will be null and void if it's deemed a total loss, and so we need to, an opportunity to address that. The other item I would just bring up from a contract basis is number three talks about pre-build. Number six talks about buyer's cancellation for convenience. I believe both of those items reference their standard kind of contract language if somebody is going to purchase a new rig. And in this case, that's what Eagan is doing, is purchasing a new 100-foot ladder that will be delivered to them approximately a year from now, so we're buying the used equipment. But I suspect, and I would defer to the city attorney for a comment, but I believe both of those items could probably be deleted from this purchase contract because I don't know that they're really relevant to us buying used equipment. I would just want to make that statement. And then you may also have a question regarding, you know, how would we finance this? I think, provide, fill in the blanks a little bit, I think what we want to do is look at some options, either doing an inter-fund transfer to pay for this, that is, we perhaps would transfer money from an existing fund that has a surplus funds in it or balance over the course of the next four or five years and consider using internal funds to pay for the remainder that we can't pay with the down payment. We have about $230,000 in the fire capital outlay for new vehicles, or for vehicles. So that's one option. Another one would be is to take advantage of the option that the company's provided and the fire chief has provided that information for you, and we don't have to make a decision on that until January 18th. So I think we would still have the option of financing through this particular company. The terms might change just because the market changes over time, but the quoted interest rates that they have in there would be good until January 18th. That's an option. And then we also have a third option at looking at other financial institutions and the potential for, back over a short period of time, four or five, actual would allow for, and so that's another option that I think we would like to look at between now and the time that we actually take delivery rather than making a decision about how to...
Mr. Jackson?
The feds just raised the interest rate today for the prime, I think it's the prime. Yeah. I think we're going to see increasing interest rates. My original gut was to finance this internally, but this provides an asset we can borrow money at, at a lower interest rate that will look pretty good, I suspect, in a year. So I'm wondering if the wiser course, usually if we have a cash laying around and we're not investing it at 3. whatever it is, it would make sense to pay it in cash and do the transfer rather than borrow at a higher, if our internal rate of return is lower than 3.29%, there's no point borrowing it at that rate. But on the other hand, we may be in a position that that interest rate will look pretty good in a year.
If we are going to pay for it internally, we can put the full sum of that money on tomorrow, for example, and earn 3% back for the next year. So if that's something that, that's a way for us to make a little money back, too.
From...
The contract is written, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The contract is written such that the price of the vehicle will be reduced by the amount of the, we put down for a down payment, and that will reduce it by 3% over the term from when we sign the agreement to the time that we take delivery on it. And of course, that date is uncertain in terms of what the delivery section is, but it would be 3% higher return than what we're getting on our monies invested right now. I would also point out that with the uncertainty in the markets right now with what Congress might be doing with the tax bill and those types of things, I mean, the market fluctuate and it can change overnight depending on what kind of a crisis occurs overseas in the Middle East. So there is some, there is an element of uncertainty with interest rates and what they will be. Something that I think we'd want to look at a little bit closer, at least from a status standpoint, have a final recommendation.
So we're not choosing on the financing at all tonight? We're just...
No.
Okay.
Other questions? Counselor Drowba.
So this is the truck that you had requested to have, to look, to put money aside for in 2016, correct? You wanted to get a 100-foot ladder truck, and this is the one. When did you expect to have that switched over? If we didn't, if we weren't to do this tonight or this week, when were you looking at changing that equipment?
Well, one of the previous, or one of the problems we've ran into was up until the last few years, we have not been steadily setting money aside for capital replacement of vehicles. So if we're looking at buying a new aerial between 800 and $1 million, I mean, it's all, it's probably a 10-year plan at the rate we're putting money away. If we find another used truck, we can look at the same options we're looking at now. If this is not the truck, we can, part of the presentation to the Budget and Finance was exactly that. If this is not the truck, we need to figure out a process of what we're looking at and what we're looking to do. So if we get another used truck like this that hits the market, we're ready to act and ready to move on that in some way, shape or form, is to have a plan. So your answer is if we're looking at brand-new, it's going to be a few years down the road. Our truck we have now, being 36 years old, you know what? It's a nice truck for 36 years old, but I think we're on borrowed time as it is. One of the options we've talked about as far as getting rid of that truck, one of the problems we're running into is this particular company will not take it on trade. They have two of them right now, the exact same make, the exact same vintage. He pretty much told me if a fire department offered him any money, they would sell them. That's how valueless they are right now. There's just not a market for those vintage trucks. So one of the options we'd looked at for getting rid of it, if we got rid of it, is surplus equipment and putting it out on either auction or bid.
As a follow-up question to that, what would the next piece of equipment now that we, if we were to move forward on this aerial, what would the next piece of equipment that would need to be replaced in the fire department?
On the fireside, the next piece of equipment after that would either be a graft rig or if the city wanted to purchase a tender, that's some options we need to look at as well. Tender meaning a tanker.
One thing I just want to say is the reason Eagan is getting rid of this truck is they're consolidating departments and hiring more full-time staff. So this truck isn't due to be replaced at Eagan for another 15 years. That's the only reason why it's going up for sale. The new Viking Stadium is being built there and they need a bigger ladder, and they're getting everything that's the same so anybody can run those trucks. So it's not because it's old or anything like that. This truck, they don't want to get rid of it. The guys that we went out and drove it with are like, we don't want to see this truck go. Not that it's, you know, it's, it's end of life with them. There's a lot of life left in that truck. So that's, you know, I don't think we'll find a better one.
I think, you know, if you're going to buy a million-dollar truck, you're going to increase, and on top of, we're going to increase our levy. About, you know, $100,000 a year is a 5% levy increase if you put $100,000 aside to pay a million, for a million-dollar truck.
Well, the other thing we need to look at, too, is if we bought a brand-new million-dollar truck, that's no equipment on it. If you want to put equipment on it, you're going to talk another $50,000 to $75,000 on top of that. This truck coming loaded for what was on this truck and included in the sale, we figured it out roughly at between $37,000 and $38,000 worth of gear on it.
I think this sounds like a good deal. My only heartburn is the fact that they get to use it for a year. Now, what I'm wondering is, when, can we put in the contract, I would, I would like to have all of their repair records and any reportable incidents, meaning like they bumped the fender or whatever, that was, there was damage reported to us before we take possession so that, you know, the usage...
That is part of the sale, yes. That is part of the sale, yes.
Yeah. That, I, I want to know for sure what we're getting in a year, then.
All maintenance records would be transferred to us, so we have a life history of the truck and maintenance.
They've submitted them to us up to date already, so.
The attorney?
Under 5A, or now in the new one, it says 5, we would do a new inspection 10 days before delivery, and if there's been any material change in condition, they have to remedy that. So I mean, I think that that is sufficient. I would agree with the city administrator that paragraphs 3 and 6 do not apply and should be removed. The other change that I would recommend in this contract, under payments, just says that we're going to make, oh, okay, I'm looking at two different ones. It does have the details of this 3% simple interest in there. Whatever method we determine, that should probably be part of the contract that we sign, I would, I would think.
I believe in your packet, under the REV paperwork, I believe that's outlined in that agreement. I could be mistaken, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe the terms are in that paperwork.
That's if we went with that financing.
Correct.
Yeah.
We get 3% with money down.
Whatever down payment, we would receive 3%.
Whatever down payment we put down up until the day of delivery. So that doesn't have anything to do with the financing terms. That's what we put for the down payment.
Who's giving us the 3%? The city? Eagan?
Fire Safety USA. They are brokering the sale at this point. It's technically their truck to sell right now. They've put it up for trade against a new apparatus, so it's their truck to sell.
So our, if we do financing, it's not through Fire Safety USA, it's through this REV financial?
Correct. Yep, so REV is a buyer's group, very typical of even ambulances and everything else. There's certain buyer groups, SAVIC buyer group, Western Fire GPO, there's one out of Texas. So most apparatus dealers belong to a selling group or a buying group, and if you were to buy a new apparatus, that's what guarantees you state bid pricing and everything else. That's how those buyer groups work, so.
Question for the city administrator now. This is an item that's eligible under a lease agreement?
Yes.
And therefore, it's not necessary to go out and have competitive bids because it would be near impossible under a used, to find something probably comparable or exactly comparable for a bid?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We, one of the things that I did just to enhance my comfort level with this is I did a little bit of research on the internet, and I provided over half an inch of papers with different rigs up for sale on the used market from all over the country, and I provided it to the chief, and his guys looked through it, and, and I think it was, as it's been conveyed to me, they were, this is really the condition of this vehicle. I happened to provide for them. I didn't see anything that specifically came up with a 75-foot Pierce enforcer, which is what this one is. I couldn't get that to come up on my internet search. And I did do some research on competitive bidding, and it, there is a statute that allows single-source acquisition. There's an exception for public safety equipment purchase or lease, and so it allows us to do that for public safety equipment without competitive bidding or proposals. If the equipment is clearly and legitimately limited to a single, the contract price may be best established by direct negotiation. And I've conversed with them and actually got them to take $5,000 off of it already. So the price that you're being quoted is less than what they originally asked for. So comfortable that we proceed as.
And prior to the January date, administration would have a recommendation on down payment and financing?
We can do that, absolutely.
Further questions on part of the council? And Pierce is a good product. We have not owned any Pierce, to my knowledge, here in the city?
We have not. Pierce is a Wisconsin company, so if you're familiar with McQueen Equipment out of the cities, that does all our airport equipment out there. Pierce is part of the McQueen Equipment Group, so Oshkosh Trucks, McQueen Equipment, our Vector Truck is part of that group. I can't remember the specific model of that. I think it's Vector. McNeelis garbage trucks are all part of that equipment group. They're very well-built.
Counsel's pleasure, then, with the purchase contract agreement.
I would move.
I second that.
Motion by Counsel Doba, second by Counsel Jackson, to move forward with the fire apparatus purchase agreement and the financing of this unit to be determined by the administration. Further questions or discussions with regard to the motion or the equipment? Only other question, I don't know if the city attorney or city administrator, but so the, this contract is with Fire Safety and not with the city of Eagan, and that, even though it's going to be held by Eagan for another year, that's not a issue?
I don't think, I don't think it's an issue. That's between Eagan and Fire Safety. I'm assuming that Fire Safety has a contract with Eagan where they're providing a new, new one, and they're getting this with a trade-in of some sort, and we don't know the terms of that, what they're getting for trade-in, but our contract is with Fire Safety, and I'm sure they have a separate contract with the city of Eagan.
Good. Further questions or discussion? Then the chair would then place the question before the council.
Aye.
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 No vote, yes, motion is carried, and it was given to the purchase contract agreement for the fire truck.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, is that with the changes that have been recommended by the city administrator myself, with paragraph 3 and 6 being removed?
That was the maker of the motion and the second, with those two items being out of there, and then financing to be coming forth.
I will work with the salesman to get those changes in the contract. I believe our letter of intent, I will work on that tomorrow. I think, I think a verbal is fine for tomorrow, and then we can get the letter of intent once we get our financing, I believe.
Very good.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely.
Everybody in town gets a new red fire truck. Big one.
They'll be a lot happier with this one than seeing a brand-new one.
Brand-new for us, I think. Show you red.
All right, we'll go to item number five under new business, and that's to approve the city council meeting schedule for 2018. Motion by Counsel Jackson to approve that meeting schedule. Second to the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Question on the motion or the schedule? There are a number of dates in there that have asterisks, and they are all Tuesday meetings because of holidays, city administrator?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We have New Year's Day, President's Day, and I believe Labor Day is the other.
Prior Tuesday meetings.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Other questions or discussion? Question on the approval of the meeting schedule.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No vote, yes, motion is carried, and meeting schedule is approved. Thank you. Move to reports of boards, committees, department heads, and city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing, just for the council's information, we've posted the position for office clerk, which has been vacant. I'm the posting, and so we will be advertising to hire an office clerk, and that advertisement will be times between now and January 12th, and we would close the applications at 4:00 on January 12th, and we're asking that anybody that's interested in receiving an application and getting information, that those will be available at the workforce center, so they can go to the workforce center and receive that information, and again, office clerk position will be open until 4:00 on January 12th. Other piece of information I would just. Certainly, there's a, there's a group of many people throughout the county that have been involved and met on a couple of occasions at least, perhaps three, I guess, now, and Cootask has been providing some administrative assistance. Baccus has been good enough to host the meetings, and it can, the county, Koochjin County, Kooch County, eight. All the cities have been invited and most have attended at least two of the meetings. Agencies that are involved in providing services from one extent to another to filter their. Collaborative of a number of people that have a different perspective on housing and what the housing needs are in the community, and I think they're. With a county-wide housing study, and there's, those housing studies, one is Maxfield Research. The name of it's.
Point. You. You. Wrote it down.
They're out of the south, so there's three, essentially three companies that provide these services, and really generate any funding assistance to try and move forward with any kind of a housing project. We're getting advice from a representative for the Minnesota Housing Partnership, Cherie, who's been at all the meetings, providing technical assistance as part of some technical assistance program. She'll have this background information, try and move forward with. We move forward, and how do we generate? Regarding some of the details on what a county housing study would look like is that, you know, because Koochjin County is such a large county geographically, and we have a diverse population, is they've indicated that really when we send out a request for proposals to try and get a housing study, or consulting firm to prepare a housing study, they've indicated that we can really break the county up into regions, and we can look at sub-areas within the county geographic boundaries to try and look at what the particular housing areas would be, because you can imagine that they might be different in North Home versus Little Fork or Rainier and International Falls, so there are some differences. So I think the group has requested that the local jurisdictions consider how they might be willing to help fund doing a study such as this, and we've heard a number of anything from 10,000 to 15,000 if just one city would do it, to as much as 25,000 to 30,000, although those are only estimates, to do it on a countywide basis. One of the things that was also fortuitous about this housing collaborative is that the Minnesota Housing Partnership does have $10,000 that they can contribute to an app. And, and so that has been one way to offset some of these expenses, so the local share of the cost would be something closer to 15,000 to 20,000 versus 25,000 to 30,000 if the Minnesota Housing Partnership would agree to contribute $10,000 for preparing a housing. I'm sure I probably overlooked something. I know that Counsel Jackson, yourself, Mayor Anderson have been at, at most of the meetings and participated. But I, I think we've, to get a feel and from the council as to whether or not you're interested in pursuing this.
Can I, can I add?
Please, Counsel Jackson.
Aura, which is a very small community, has been very successful by having a housing study. I don't know if North Home did a, no, theirs is totally with no government support. They're four, what is it, four apartments?
Four units, yeah.
Four units, yeah. But the, the, what I heard at that committee from the professionals in the field, that would be from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and Cootask, they're professional as well, is that we need this, if we're going to do anything, even developers need a housing study if they want to come in, they want to understand the market. We have to do this if we are going to improve our infrastructure, our housing stock.
I would just add, Counsel Doba and I were at the Koochjin Economic Development Authority meeting this afternoon, and KITA is prepared to take the lead on the county housing study, and that would include doing an RFP and being a fiscal agent for, for such a project. I think the, the question is, you know, what kind of dollars might the city be expecting to contribute to such an effort? What would we expect to receive in return? And then probably just what, what we might get out of such a, a study? So those would be the, kind of the questions that would be before us, as well, you know, would the other contributors be? And if we're looking at a $30,000 study, which is a possibility, how much would we be willing to, to take and, and consider? And where, where might that come from? Where would those funds come from?
Well, and Mr. Mayor, we do have approximately $50,000 a year flowing into the EDA fund from the excess payments we receive on the lease over the cost of the lease. And so that's excess, I think we've accumulated at least 50K, if not more, in that fund at this point in time. So far, we've got commitment from Baccus for 2,000 on that, Cootask a 1 to 2. I think, did Ward say that somebody donated some money from their Kool-Aid stand today? Or did, I thought he said that, but maybe, anyway, so there's, there's been some small donations that are coming in, people that feel so strongly. So, you know, I, if, if all the cities participate and the county participates, I would estimate that the city's portion could be 5,000. And, I mean, that, it's a little difficult to assume what that cost would be at this time, but we do have the funds for economic development, this is certainly part of it, is housing stock, improving it. That adds to our tax base, improves our ability to provide amenities and services. Therefore, I think it is rightfully can come out of the EDA account.
Counsel Doba?
I just, I just have one question. I, I'm fine with getting a housing study. I have no issue with it. But for, for the other members of the council, maybe you guys can inform me, I've been on the council for two years, and I'm, I'm still at a loss of what the role of city government is in housing. I mean, what is our role for, for housing? Do we? Do we ultimately build another apartment complex and then sell it for a dollar? Do we run an apartment complex? Do we put in duplexes? I understand that we need to have a housing study. I get that. But what are we doing the housing study for? Just to be able to give it to potential developers? I mean, inform me on what we're doing.
It is, developers require that to even consider investing in your community. That's what I heard today. If you can't present a housing study to them, they'll put their money somewhere else. It's... Did you not hear that? And reinforced by, I mean, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency and Cutasca has no vested interest in promoting a housing study. What, I mean, we're paying for it. And may, it is, they are relaying to our collaborative group that you really need a housing study to do anything in terms of improving your housing, whether it be through grants or developers. The other thing was, you know, when you write a grant to have support for, let's say, a low-income housing unit, your grantors want to see the need. Because they can't grant funds unless they are addressing a well-documented need. They look for evidence.
So when you say "we" write a grant study, are you talking about the city of International Falls? Are you talking about another economic group in the community?
Well, you know, for instance, what came up today at KITA was the fact that we've failed in our county, I guess, over the years to take advantage of the community development block grants. And Joanne Smith brought up that there's an opportunity there to get grants for light downtown revitalization. Who's going to write the grants? Is that what you're asking me?
Absolutely.
Yeah. The capacity to write grants right now, I mean, is, we're going to look to KITA to do that because we don't have staff, we don't have city staff to write grants. It's a big undertaking. One of the things we really need to think about, it's been done in the past. Myrna Algren Meadows used to be a community-wide, countywide grant writer and was paid a salary through the county. If we really start exploring grant opportunities, CBDG and some other others, HUD grants, or no, MFPA grants, Minnesota Housing Finance grants, we may find that the capacity for KITA to address that kind of work is going to be limited because they only have, what, four staff. We may want to think down the road about a partnership with KCDA for a countywide grant writer who would be available to help us out on some of this stuff. I think we may end up looking at that. But that's answering your question too specifically. The thing is, we need manpower, or womanpower, whatever, to write grants. And some of this funding will come from grants. Not all of it will be developers.
I think we have a number of units in the community, thinking of the National Falls Housing and Redevelopment Authority, which operates the Woodland Park Apartments, 82 units over there. That facility is getting on 50-plus years old. We have South Falls Apartments, which is a privately-owned group. And also the one on 20th Street...
West Falls.
West Falls, thank you. And those, the folks in those are in some way eligible for grant monies or assistance to live in those facilities. I know I've had several senior citizens who have asked about the possibility of a new senior center being developed, something newer, more modern, that... not going to be able to stay in their homes and keep their properties up, and so they are looking to move to some type of facility. I know, looked at the one in the city of Bedette and some of the others that have been constructed, and folks are interested in those. So I think that, you know, that there's a number of areas that we could pursue with having a good housing study and good information to share.
And as far as the city's role in housing, we, our tax base depends upon the value of the housing and the health of our community and our children in the school systems. And frankly, our score is coming out of the school system. A reflection somewhat of the stability of families and the health that the kids come to school with in terms of emotional and physical health. So housing hits at all of those areas, and it's up to the leaders of our community to facilitate and nurture a stronger, if you have to put in dollars, cents, tax base, right? And that goes to housing.
City Administrator.
If I may, I would just add to what both the comments that you have made are, have been not outside of the realm of government's jurisdiction to try and benefit low and moderate income persons, which is essentially like some sort of housing assistance to offset housing expenses for people who are on fixed incomes and don't have the means. It's not uncommon to have government programs subsidize housing expenses for particular groups of low and moderate income persons is a financial parameters that have to be met to do that. But it's not unusual. It's very common. And typically, you would see EDAs with housing authority or HRAs undertaking these. One of the other points, and you know, this has been a real... Some of these, they're useful life, but we, program is a good example of the city's... And blighting influences are very relevant to grant applications. And I would say that actually, our city's been pretty successful at securing community grant funds in the past. The way that we've got those is applying to the State Department of Employment and Economic Development to try and get small cities development program grant funds. Have to meet those...
Oh, it is. I didn't know that.
Because we're not an intelligent county. We don't have the...
Okay.
We don't have the funds directly for, for the community development block grant program. Buy and get funding on a competitive basis. And we've got, as far as I know, four separate grants over the last 16 or 17 years. Rehab our rental houses and did some commercial rehab downtown. So we have taken advantage of community development. Care fairly well to try and eliminate some in blight and meet the...
There's two areas that I think, how we might move forward here. And that would be, one, in letting KITA and the collaborative know that we're interested in participating in the study. Secondly, that we might be willing to put forth at least some type of a figure of what we might contribute to such a study. I think getting that out and with those groups, I think, would be helpful.
They're time-sensitive on this, too. In order to access the 10,000 match on the housing study, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency will provide a 10,000 match to the overall cost. So we're looking at 20 or more potentially. But we don't have all day. We've got to... I think I heard today that they would like to have this by the January 22nd meeting.
January 22nd meeting, they would like to take and make application.
Right. And so we need to have a commitment by then.
So this can certainly wait till the meeting in January, or if the councils have a mind, aid our interest in participating and what kind of dollars we might be willing to put forth, we could do that.
Chair is open to a motion with the background that the city administrator has provided?
I will make a motion that the city contribute if, from the EDA fund, an amount not exceeding, and to be determined precisely, but not exceeding, I'm going to say 12,000 because it's a per capita, if you divide, if you divide 20,000 by 12,000 people, or we're 50% of the county in population, 50% of 20,000 is 10,000. So I'll say not exceeding 10,000. We may come in less, but on a per capita basis, 10,000 is our share of the population. But I don't know what...
Population of the county is about 13, and we're probably six of that.
So we're about half, I'm saying, maybe a little less, 40%. So just to put an outside limit on it, until we contest at the next, in the conversations taking place between now and the 22nd, there'll be side conversations with the county and that. If we can assess what other contributors are going to make, it's potentially possible that we could go to 10,000, but I would look to something closer to 5. But if you're asking for a dollar amount in this motion, I would say certainly not more than 10. Because that is a pro-rata share of the population, basically. Not exceeding 10.
That was a long motion.
Yeah, I know. But I was trying to explain my rationale.
So we have a motion by Councilor Jackson to notify the collaborative and KITA that we are interested in participating in the county housing study and are prepared to contribute to something not to exceed 10,000.
And to, and that would include special focus on city requests as well. So we had some idea that we would ask, because if they break it down into regions, which we will, then the city is going to have some specific requests that really pertain just to the city, and we would want that included in that 10. We get special dispensation under that.
Which could have, could have the city focus on special items in the study. Okay?
That would, the full amount of 10 would be contingent upon that request being met. That's a long one.
The motion, is there a second? Second time, is there a second? Second, the motion.
The motion before us, and that would be to participate in the study, and that we would contribute not to exceed 10,000, of which some of those funds could well focus on special items that the city would expect from the study.
Question? Councilor Drouba.
I'm fine with joining the collaborative and being part of it. The $10,000 seems a little bit steep without knowing what everyone else is doing. And my thought is, is if the city's number is $10,000, and that's what gets out after this meeting, that we're willing to contribute up to $10,000, we are going to contribute up to $10,000. So that's my hang-up on it. I would be willing to amend the motion for a lesser dollar amount, but I can't move on what's been proposed.
The Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, just based on the action that the city council took regarding the matter truck, and the suggestion that perhaps we have a budget and finance committee meeting to explore how we would finance that sometime between now and... But these finance agencies said they needed to... Perhaps it would be appropriate to have a conversation at a budget and finance committee meeting to how we would appropriate money. Also have a conversation about, you know, what an appropriate total amount. At the meeting this afternoon or this morning, and obviously not everybody was there, we don't have any information... Just so we can provide better information for the council to make an... A budget and finance committee agenda that would happen sometime before January 16. About appropriate revenue sources and the appropriate amount. And hopefully between now and then, we'll get an idea about where some of the other there's funding to help fund it, too. Having a budget and finance committee meeting before you actually...
Good approach.
Motion is always in order to table.
It is time-sensitive, so we do need to have that meeting.
Well, I believe the motion to amend is that we don't set a dollar amount at this time, and that we show support for the, for the action, but we don't set a dollar amount at this time.
We have an intent to participate.
Yes.
Okay. So I will amend my motion based on your recommendation that we want to make a resolution that we intend to participate and provide support to be determined for this collaborative housing study. Period. That's what happens when you think out long.
All right, so revised motion from Councilor Jackson is that the city intends to participate in the county housing study, and that upon a meeting of the budget and finance, we would determine a level of contribution to that effort.
And I think, you know, our next meeting of the collaborative is the 22nd. So we need a council meeting to act before then. So we need a budget and finance committee meeting before the next, before the second council meeting, which is...
Second council meeting is January 16th, which is Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, seems appropriate time. Further discussion? Question then on the city's participation in the county housing study and the contribution to be determined by a budget and finance committee meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote yes, there being four for the motion and one against. The motion carries, and I ask the city administrator to notify the agencies of that decision. Further, under the city administrator's report. Thank you. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, council, as requested, that the last council meeting I did discuss with Norm Christiansen, the mobile home that's been an eyesore over across from the football stadium. And he is agreeable to having that demoed. And I believe he may have met, did he meet with you? Has he signed the necessary paperwork and things? So we're good to go there. And Ted has been informed, so hopefully that'll be gone soon.
Yay.
So the white goods have been removed?
You still have to do that, maybe.
White goods have been removed. There's some loose items that have to be cleaned out.
I have no further report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. That's very good to hear. Appreciate that. Thank you. And city police chief?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Further from the fire chief?
Nothing further, that's...
Thank you. And you go to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Well, I've been living here along with Brian and the mayor. Because of the, we're in labor...
Associations, yes.
Nothing more to say about that, except that it's a time-consuming thing, so... Then the other thing is that, again, I'm going to harp on this budget and finance, we need to put some, you know what my favorite harp is on that? The sales tax. We need to talk about that. We need to get it on our agenda. It's pretty urgent, really.
All right, further? In my...
In my report, there's two items. Council Drogba and I were part of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, and the, the sixth bullet there on the committee, we met here last Thursday. Probably the lead item that it asks the council to be aware of is consideration of requiring all rental property owners to assume the payment of water and sewer fees on rental property. Now, we're not asking for action at this time, we're just asking the council to, to start considering this. And we could see that this could be implemented over time, that it wouldn't, wouldn't have to be done, everybody rush out and, and start changing addresses and, and starting to pay. But, as property that's being rented, as the client or the renters change, then they would, it would then become the owner of that property to take over that. Or if there was a delinquent account, then it would be brought to the attention of the property owner, and they would be required to.
That's not true, no.
No. No. My understanding, I need to still go back and look at the ordinance, but I, my understanding of it right now, that we do not require that.
No, if I could add to it.
Council Drogba.
There's a, one of the major reasons for this is, and there was a ton of great information that Emma had put together from downstairs. I don't remember the percentage, but it is a vast majority of our Public Works' time is spent on a very minute amount of houses in our community. And, the way that the Public Works had presented it to us is, like Mayor Anderson said, it can go over time. You may, we may not find one out for 20 years, that it's a rental house, because the people pay every month on time, there's never an issue, they don't move out. But after that 20 years, we would have to, like, look to the records of who owns the house, to the address, and if it's not the same person, put it on that. And that way, we, as a city, start to figure out how many rentals we have in our community. So that's, that's one of the key reasons, and it isn't like that right now. In fact, some of the owners of the homes, their renters are not paying their water bills. And if they're not paying their water bills, they're also not paying their rent when they leave. They, the water's been shut off at the end of the year, the homeowner then finds out that they have a $250 water bill that goes on their taxes at the end of the year. So I think it's beneficial for everyone, from the renters, to the city, to the homeowners, to make this policy change.
It's important that we know which properties are rental properties, too. So this will help us get a database in our water department for that.
And there was a, a rec, I think it was Spicer, Minnesota, there was a ordinance that they use, and that's how they did their transition over to this. And I, it was, it looked like a very good policy. There was some things that I think we would have to change, but we do have something to look at and move forward with.
Good work, thank you.
It wasn't me.
Emma.
It was Emma in the Public Works Department.
Secondly, the committee is also looking at how to make the crosswalk at Sixth Street and Highway 71, which is the corner of the stadium, Super 1 Grocery, how to make that a safer crosswalk. And, we've had some near misses there, we've, in the past, have had some accidents, and we're trying to determine how we make that a safer crosswalk for everyone that, because we have folks from the Woodland Park Apartments, from the Trailer Park, there's a fair number of crossers, and it's a four-lane section there. And so it's a long, long walk. Some cars will stop, and then somebody will start a cross, and another car will come whistling through. And we have a flashing light there. After a while, flashing lights become part of the horizon, you just don't see them anymore. And so, we're just trying to, to, and the city street commissioner, Ted Brokaw, is putting together some information pieces for us on equipment that could be, could be revised for that. So just a couple of the items, and there'll be more coming out of our committee meeting as we move along with that. What I have to report, is there any other council committees, boards, and commissions to report?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we should have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting relatively soon. I think one of the things that we do need to still talk about is the water with Rainier, to have that conversation, unless something has changed since last time we've met.
We have a letter from the city of Rainier, warning the potential increase in water rates. And so, yes, we do owe Rainier a meeting sometime in the new year. And so, there's probably two or three items that would, Budget and Finance, you know, fire truck.
Well, my thought is, is I think we have more than two or three. So if we can break it out into two meetings, maybe, before our regular council meetings on the 2nd and the 16th, and leave it up to the administrator to break out what's, what would be appropriate for those two meetings. Because we do have a lot of stuff that needs to get looked at, going, moving forward, so. You could meet at 2:00 on January 2nd, and maybe again on January 16th, both Tuesdays, before our council meetings.
We're setting that time.
Yes.
What time, 3?
2:00 P.M.
2.
2:00 P.M. on January 2nd, and again on January 16th. Items to be determined. Budget and Finance Committee. Further for council committees? If not, seeing no one here in the audience, Duane, do you have any questions? Very good, thank you for your attendance. Correspondence is noted. The next city council meeting is Tuesday, January the 2nd. And with that, I would bid everyone a Merry Christmas and a healthy and happy New Year as we adjourn this meeting. Thank you.